Be with you.
All right, we're ready to go.
All right, everybody. Thank you. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a regular session of the Mayor and Council, City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona, being held on Tuesday, May 4th, 2021, at 7:01 PM by Zoom. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Louis Pollak?
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacamino?
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis?
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge?
Yeah.
Councilmember Leslie Johns?
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hansen?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein?
Here.
City staff Stephen Pocken, City Manager Ashley Coronado, City Clerk Carrie Bagley, Finance Director Joelle Landers, Personnel Director Jesus Harrow, Public Works Director George Castillo, Fire Chief Joestus, City Attorney.
All right, thank you, everybody, for attending, and those that are online or on Facebook, we appreciate you joining us. So tonight, for a moment of silence, I just want to let everybody know that this Thursday, May 6th, 12 o'clock, will be the National Day of Prayer. It will be something that's held at the Community Church in Warren. And I want us all to just think a little bit, and about, give thanks to all of the churches that are participating in this, all the reverends, the pastors, and the deacons, that will be praying for so many things that affect us all. So if we take a minute and give thanks to our spiritual leaders, thank you. All right, thank you, everybody. No real proclamations tonight. I am going to ask, without objection, I'm going to move the City Managers' report before item 10, so that people that are watching tonight, we can get those reports. There are going to be several of them tonight, and before we go into executive session, so that then they don't have to log back in to hear the final report. So without objection, I'd like to move the City Managers' up before we go into executives. So outside of that, nothing else that I have. We'll just move along and move to accounts payable. Do we have a motion?
I move that we pay accounts payable in the account of $341,350.14, subject to availability.
I second that.
All right, I have a motion in a second to a pay accounts payable. Do we have questions? Do I see hands? No hands. I do have one quick one for Carrie, if you might. I know we get charged every month for water reports from the Arizona Water. What do we, we're $125 a month. What do we really, are those used every month, or is it, I guess I wasn't here when all that was established, so I was just wondering about that.
We do use them. They, we have on-off reports, so it shows who activated an account and disconnected the account, and it also shows all the usage reports. And we can use them to see, you know, to compare maybe accounts that we have missing on our system, who the, who's paying on a bill. You know, some people say that, you know, they don't live there, they're not using it, and we can double-check that. We do use it to cross-reference a lot of different things.
Okay, so, sounds like it's worth it for our sewer and garbage collections. That's what we usually, okay. Thank you for that. I just wanted to be updated on that, so we know. All right, we have a motion and a second to a pay accounts payable in the amount of $341,350.14. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pollak?
Right.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. So we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. We have four sets of minutes to approve, actually five sets, and then some park and facility use permits. Does anyone have any one, any one of these they would like pooled? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
My second.
We have a motion by Frank, and we have a second by Joan to approve the consent agenda as listed. Vote, please.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein? Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Moving on to old business. This will be item number three, discussion of possible approval of ordinance O-21-11, authorizing the sale and transfer of certain property located at 121 Fort Wachuka Lane. This, of course, is the second reading. Do we have discussions or questions for anyone? Seems like you've gone through this. Okay, any, is there a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance O-21-11, authorizing the sale and transfer of certain property located at 121 North Wachuka Lane.
All right, I have a motion by Joan, a second by Frank, to approve ordinance O-21-11. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0, so moved. Now, we're on to new business. This is discussion, item number four, discussion of possible approval of resolution R-21-03. This is adopting the tentative budget for the City of Bisbee for FY 2021, as well as give notice of time for public hearing to taxpayers for the adoption of this budget. Do we have questions, discussions about the three and a half nights we spent going through? Oh, go ahead. Let me ask Ann first, and then I'll go to you, Steve.
So just for clarification, when we adopt the tentative, we're just setting our spending limitation, but we can still go back and have one more chance to question or change things or whatever, as long as we don't go over, correct?
That, that correct is the correct impact of what this motion is for.
This is as much as we can spend. We can't go add more.
Yeah, you won't be able to spend more, but you can spend less. Please.
Okay, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, thank you, everyone, and good evening. I, that was a point that I was going to make, so thank you, Anna, because that's an important consideration. We did go through, I think, about seven hours total of questions and presentations over three nights in the past week, and so I'm not going to go through another presentation by any means, but I just wanted to let you know that we, even though we have a spending plan tentatively that will put our limitation on expenditures for the next fiscal year, there are some things that we will be working on, some of which we've already identified, and some of which we probably have not identified yet, but are looking for a pathway to actually spend less money. For instance, what we discussed earlier with regard to public safety, retirement, pension, refinancing, that's an area where Mr. Estes and I will be taking the lead to start a process that we can bring to you some hard options to follow or not, depending on how we're able to structure a refinancing deal. That will hopefully be coming sooner rather than later, because it is dependent on interest rates, and interest rates do fluctuate. We're also looking at, we're taking another look at the way we dispense fuel, and I think we've identified that we're spending more on fuel than we were a year ago with basically the same operation. So we're taking a hard look at that right now, with an eye on making some changes that will reduce the amount of cost for fuel, without necessarily lowering the amount of fuel we use. And I think that can come in somewhere in the neighborhood of $40,000 to $50,000 a year, so that's not insignificant. So, and as we are doing right now, and as we will continue to do into the next fiscal year, we're going to put a hard line on the ability for employees to spend money without permission. I know that we had used this successfully during the years of the Great Recession, and basically '09 and '10, and we were able to control our expenditures to the point where we always ended those budget years in the black. That's our goal for the coming fiscal year, as difficult as it's going to be, but disciplined spending will make the difference. And that's probably the big, biggest thing about this next budget that we're going to work as hard on as we can. So with that, staff recommends approval of the tentative budget. Unless you have any questions for Carrie.
I see one from Joni. Go ahead.
It's not so much a question as a statement. I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to thoroughly explain things and answer our questions, and take the 70-plus million hours that we did spend, but it gave us a better understanding, and it also gave the public a better understanding of what's going on, and just pushing through it. So I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lou, go ahead.
Mr. Pocken, I really appreciate those words of fiscal discipline. I think that's something that's been sorely missing in Bisbee for some time now, and I have a statement that I'd like to make to you. The budget as proposed has structural problems to which I must object. First, it represents an 8.2 increase over the current budget, but requires approximately $350,000 from reserves to balance. This is a budget tactic I will not support. Second, some line items and department requests are 50% to 100% above the current fiscal amounts without being adequately justified. Third, an increase in previously negotiated contract amount is anticipated without negotiations having taken place. This giveaway will weaken the city's position at the negotiating table. In addition to these objections, you have made statements over the last, the three days that we looked at the budget, that give me concern. You've expressed a desire to revisit rebuilding the old city hall, in spite of the fact that historical documentation indicates that this would be an expensive vanity project. You have stated your support for police body cameras, which have a low initial equipment cost, but a much higher and as-yet undefined maintenance and storage cost, data storage cost. And finally, you have stated you would like to refinance our PSPRS debt, thereby lowering our annual debt service cost, but in my opinion, doing nothing to solve the long-term problem. You are an experienced city manager with the background to make hard decisions necessary to balance the budget, but I see nothing in this proposed budget that will drive us in that direction. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, in response to Mr. Pollak's statement, I certainly appreciate his point of view. I will reiterate for the record that we had a four-day schedule of questions, where some of these things could have been brought up, and were not. We would have certainly entertained them and had a full discussion of them. And finally, let's see what happens a year from now.
Fair enough.
Do I see any other questions or comments? Really quickly for me, I have some of those same concerns, Lou, but what I also have is that, as far as what future negotiations may be, whether they be body cameras or for some other contract services, those will come before us on a one-by-one basis, and those are when we, those decisions will be made. They have to be put into the budget at this time in order to decide if we want them or not. If we don't put them in, then there's no way we could even entertain them. So that's why I'm willing to support it at this time, and just wanted to make that comment. So I'll entertain a motion to approve, or to, yeah, to approve the resolution R-2103. Do I have one? If not, I'll move to approve resolution R-2103, adopting a tentative budget for fiscal year 2022. Have a second.
I'll second it.
I think I heard Joni first, and so I'll say I did the motion, and Joni was the second. I have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes 6-1. Thank you. Moving on to new business, item number five. This is discussion possible direction regarding the reopening of the library building to the public. And I believe Jason's on board here and will give us a report. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council and staff. So I'm just here to give you an update on our plans to reopen the library, to allow the public back in. And for the past two weeks, we've been doing library by appointment, so that's patrons can make an appointment one at a time to spend 30 minutes in the library, and that's for browsing books, using the computers, printing things. And so we have come up with a plan to move on from that phase. And the plan that we did come up with came from our staff, what other libraries are doing, and that's both locally and beyond Cochise County. And also, we met with the Library Advisory Board about three weeks ago, and I got their input for what we should be doing, and I've written that out, and I just kind of, I want to read it, so the people that are watching knows what the modifications are that we've made that will allow us to reopen to the public. So this is, this is our plan, and read through this. All patrons must wear masks, enter the library building, and we do have disposable masks available for people who don't have one, who forget one. All patrons must follow social distancing guidelines. All patrons should limit their visit to 30 minutes, and that's just to control the amount of people in the library at one time. Daily newspapers will be kept outside on the balcony for patrons to read in that outdoor space. The amount of patrons in the library at one time should be limited to 10 people. Library programs will remain virtual or be held outside in our public parks. Curbside pickup will remain available for those people that choose to utilize that. Computers will be, just to ensure social distancing guidelines, computers will be cleaned in between uses. Toys, puzzles, and other manipulatives that we keep in the children's library will be kept in storage at this time. We do have hand sanitizing stations that are throughout the library, encourage people, our patrons, to use them. The library's public meeting rooms will remain unavailable during this phase, and furniture will be arranged to encourage social distances. And we do have glass shields at our front counter, and the Copper Queen Library Annex will continue for right now to do Friday curbside pickup until we are able to hire our new early literacy coordinator, who could help us reopen the annex space. So those are the modifications that we've come up with, and I just wanted to get the council's feedback, if you had any, or any direction that you may wish to give us. We're looking, if approved, we're looking probably to reopen Monday, May 17.
All right, May 17. Great. Questions, comments? Frank, I saw your hand first.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, Jason, thanks for putting this together. I'm sure it's a great feeling to start to get open again, and I know the community is certainly looking forward to it being open.
Absolutely, and people are, you know, this whole library by appointment, everyone, all of our patrons have been great this whole past year, and they are, they are excited to come back in the library. We're so excited to greet them and have them back in, and we do think we can do this both safely and efficiently.
Thank you, Frank. Leslie, how are you, Anna?
I just wanted to say, Jason, that as a person with a background in public health, I fully support everything you guys are doing. I think the measures that you're taking are really solid. I loved this plan when I heard it in Library Committee a couple weeks ago, and I'm really happy that you guys are going to be getting back to some kind of normalcy, and I think you're doing a great job, and full speed ahead.
Thank you.
All right, Anna, you're next.
Well, Leslie just said everything I was going to say. I think it's a great plan. I'm really excited that you're going to be opening, but I also want to thank you for doing the curbside pickup. And I was surprised at how many people used it, and how many bags were out there when I went up to go pick mine up. So I know that, you know, you did a great job through all of this, and a lot of people have used your services and appreciate everything that you do, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Joni, I got you.
I just wanted to let you know, too, I was talking to my boss down in Douglas, and you do as the example, because she's wanting to open the library down there, Jennifer Smith. She works in Parks and Rec, and we were talking about the precautions, and I told her that you were moving forward, and she's very excited about libraries opening up, and she's, you know, hoping that Douglas is going to follow suit also, because what a role the library plays, not only for your intellectual health, but for, you know, your mental well-being. And so I told her, yeah, just to drop your name, just to let you know, but anyway.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Anybody else? Great. And I'll put my accolades in, and just doodle everything that's been said, and I think that slowly we are going to move forward. That's been a while, so I think it's a, it's a great situation. So, all right, I'll entertain a motion for item number five. Who wants to do it? Leslie?
I don't think a motion is necessary. I just, yeah.
Wait a minute, okay, direction and possible direction. Okay, we're moving forward.
Thank you for your feedback, guys.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. All right. So now we have a discussion and possible approval. This is item six, for the FY 22 Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance and Delta Dental Insurance Renew Agreements. We have these on our, yes, ready to roll, and I see there's some, a little bit of change, but not too bad. So go ahead, our Personnel Director, fill us in.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this evening, I'm presenting to you the fiscal year 22 Blue Cross Blue Shield insurance contract, as well as the Delta Dental contract. I have also included a considerable amount of backup documentation that we've received from CBIZ, who is our broker for our services, and they have been our broker for quite some time now. Our initial renewal that was released by Blue Cross Blue Shield was an increase of 15%. And Becky and her team at CBIZ was able to, they were able to successfully renegotiate that contract to 6%. That 6% increase has been included in the tentative budget that was just approved, and that also included the additional 25% supplemental coverage for the base for family plans, and that was as it was approved by Mayor and Council. I believe it's been two years now. I wanted to make one clarification. So for both, for the Blue Cross Blue Shield plans, there was no change to the plan, and I have here premiums, but I wanted to make a correction that by premiums, I'm referring to the co-pays and deductibles that are at the employee cost. How, so there is going to be an increase, unfortunately, in what the employee will pay should they have buy-up services, or if they add their families. But again, the actual plan itself, and what the co-pays that are expected from the employees, as well as the $500 deductible and $1,000 deductible, those two did not change. Would you like me to continue, or are there individual questions you want me to answer about the health insurance plan?
Seeing none?
Okay, I'll continue. Delta Dental, there was no change to the plan or premium. The Delta Dental benefit is a 100% employer-paid benefit to the employee, so there's no expense to the employee. Delta Dental issued a rate pass for one year, meaning there's no increase in our costs, but they will still require a contract to be signed. Our Vision Service Plan, VSP, again, no change to the plan or premium for the city or the employees. Currently, we are in the middle of a two-year rate guarantee, and so there are no additional contracts or anything to sign this year. Mutual of Omaha, which carries our life insurance, voluntary life insurance, AD&amp;D, short-term disability and long-term disability for our PSPRS members only. Again, no change to the plan or premium, and again, Mutual of Omaha issued a rate pass for one year. So overall, this is an incredibly great renewal, considering the number of active claims in 2020, and also considering that our initial response was 15%. So it's, again, I included a lot of the history, the historical documents. I thought it was really nice to see on the one graph where our overall rate increase, I think, over the last five years has been right about 5%. We fluctuated a little bit, but for the most part, that's where we've been staying, whereas the national average is about a 12% increase per year. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Sorry, any questions? Anna, go ahead.
Not so much a question, just a comment that I appreciate working with CBIZ, because they, they've really been helpful over numerous years. So I just want to say thanks for that.
Yes, I agree.
All right. Any other comments or questions on item number six? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the FY 22 Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance Contract and the Delta Dental Contract.
Second?
All right, we have a motion by Joan and a second by Anna to approve item number six. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns? Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye, motion passes seven zero, so moved. Moving on to item number seven, this is one I'll be handling, which is a discussion of possible approval of an amended, amended memorandum of understanding between the City of Sierra Vista, Cochise County Flood Control, Hurford Natural Resources Conservation District, the Nature Conservancy, the City of Bisbee, formally adding Port Huachuca to the Cochise County Recharge Network. I sit on that for our city. This is what's been going on now for several years. Working on how to recharge the San Pedro of different areas. We've been working hard, we'll be releasing here pretty soon a very, very nice website that will have tons of information on what kind of recharge is happening, where it's happening, what projects are underway, where we are on those projects. So it, it's gonna be a very informative and a very good useful tool for anyone that wants to get into the nitty gritty of this. All this document does is amend the ability to bring Port Huachuca on as one of the members. They have some chance for possibly some funding for, for this network and it would be helpful for them to have on board. So I'll entertain any questions if anybody has any. All right, thank you. I'll just. Let's see, move to approve the MOU with the adding the Port Huachuca to the Cochise County Recharge Network. Do I have a second? I'll call my motion and Frank, you're the loudest. And we'll go ahead and have a vote, so if anybody needs to have, who voted what, thanks.
Councilmember Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacomo?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Sorry.
Mayor Budge?
Aye, motion passes seven zero, thank you everyone. All right, moving on to item number eight. This is a possibility to look at paving the Walsh parking lot. This was a recommendation that came from the Streets and Infrastructure Committee. So I'll turn it over to Public Works. Go ahead, Jesus.
Very much remember the council, as you mentioned, the Streets and Infrastructure Committee did have on their agenda the, a discussion of possible recommended to pave the Walsh Avenue Parking Lot. This is the parcel that it's actually located, actually has an address of one sixteen Brewery Avenue. It's obviously commonly referred to as a Walsh Avenue Parking Lot. I did provide you with a parcel map. That part is zero three, six, three, one, two, zero. It does have a smaller parcel that is directly on the corner of Walsh Avenue and Brewery Avenue. That is not owned by the city, privately owned. We do, we do own this parcel, it is not out of, it's not an easement. It's owned by the City of Bisbee. I did some preliminary estimations on the cost, the cost of materials. It come to about thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. And then with this project, I would strongly recommend that we get professional engineering services to do a design. Because this is a new paving project. What we would be doing, we will be getting a large impermeable surface, which will increase the drainage. So we do need to have some design so that we can retain the crease and drainage that we would creating. The total estimated cost to pay this would be about twenty-five thousand dollars. I do, if approved, I will pay using the one percent Streets and Infrastructure Sales Tax line item. With that, I'd be happy to hear any questions.
All right, see Anna's hand, go ahead.
Why are we paving this at this time?
It was a recommendation by the Streets and Infrastructure Committee. It was an agenda item that was brought before the committee by one of members. It is not something that, that I brought forth. It was something that was recommended.
Okay, now is this just public parking or will there be private parking involved? You're breaking up.
It would be public parking. I apologize. Yes, it would be a public parking lot.
Thank you.
Uh, Leslie?
I was just wondering if, because I know a lot of people park in that area who live up there. Are any of them on the Streets and Infrastructure Committee? Or have we talked to the residents in that area to see what they think of this?
I do not believe residents in that area are on the infrastructure committee. And I do not know if any of the committee members have spoken to any of them.
Okay, cuz I would kind of like to see some kind of survey of the neighborhood. Just because, and I hope I'm not stereotyping, but I know people in the gulch can get touchy about anything changing up there. And so I just wondered if, if there's any way we can take some kind of community survey of the people who actually use this parking lot on a regular basis before we go in and kind of do this to them. I, I always say I would rather do things with the community than to the community. And so would that be possible before we do this?
I'm sure we could do, I'm sure we could. I only bring this before you today because it was voted on, so I'm obligated to do so today.
Okay, thank you.
Frank, you're either one.
So Jesus, currently that is, it's gravel, right?
Correct.
It seems to be working okay. I mean, perhaps it needs to be smoothed out some or whatever. Yeah, I agree with Leslie, we should look at this a little, a little more before we pave it.
Thank you.
Anna, I saw your hand.
I, I agree with Leslie, you know, and Frank, I mean, it's, it's doing okay as is. I just kind of hate to see an expense right now until we can, you know, really see where we're at.
All right.
Thank you.
If I might make a suggestion, I'd like to send us back to the Streets and Infrastructure and maybe get some more feedback. Maybe they can reach out to their neighbors, find out a little bit more about that and, and discuss it further. And then if the desire is still there with more information, they could bring that to us. Because as it is right now, I don't think we have the information that might be needed. Joan, go ahead.
I'm assuming that the one cent or one percent sales tax for streets is paving this or it's coming out of streets. And there's no impact to the general fund.
No, it would, say Streets and Infrastructure, what that would do to that budget line item is it would only remove, remove to do other types of pavement preservation or infrastructure improvements. We have a set, we have a budget that you all discussed during our preliminary budget meeting. We will, we will only do what we can with that button, so it doesn't mean that we're going to ask for additional money. We would only be doing project instead of a different project.
Uh, Joni, thanks, Joan, you're done.
I just like, my question is, only because I was asked by somebody about streets, why are we paving this type of a situation? I mean, even after Frank said it's gravel, it's working. And we're not doing streets like Tembi or, you know, some of the other potholeville streets that are up there. I would think that those would be at the front of the queue way before, you know, some, I don't know, I'm just curious cuz I've had that.
Yeah, absolutely, and those, those streets that aren't leaved, those are within our pavement maintenance program in our work. And we, we will address those that are already this. Project. The reason I bring this before you again is because they made a recommendation and it's something that I felt because it's a new project, they needed to be discussed before council. And this is something that we would have to maintain in the future.
Yeah, it was just a matter of putting down a little asphalt, but with engineering and everything else, I'll be honest. My preference, if we have extra, goes on Commerce Street, because that thing is, anyway, every time I go to the post office, I have to, have to put a mouth guard in my mouth so I don't chip teeth, I think, but anyway. If that's okay, if everybody would agree, I would just suggest to send us back to Streets and Infrastructure and just tell them that as it is right now, the council would rather hold off and, and if they get some more information, that would be more reasonable why this would be higher on the list than they could bring it back to us. If that's okay with everybody, we'll just, okay. I see enough shaking heads, I think, so thanks, everybody. Thanks, Jesus, all right. But you're on the queue for the next one, which is discussion of possible approval of the lease agreement for new garbage trucks. This is a biggie.
It is, thank you. So as you all have been hearing last, we two or three meetings now, that we've had some problems with garbage truck with the one that caught fire and that was, was deemed a total loss. And then we had a second truck that requires quite a bit of maintenance to it. We did have in-depth conversations with a rush truck center. They have advised us that it is not in the best interest for the city to move forward with repairing that truck. The initial estimate to repair that truck, and that was a two thousand four, I believe, garbage truck is eleven thousand dollars, the initial repair. And that will then allow them to address some additional repairs. So as you can see there, that, that's, that could quickly get to a point where not an insurance company, but it, it just doesn't make financial sense to spend that much money on a garbage truck. And so with this, we're, we're recommending that we go into a lease for two new garbage truck. We have done a number, a lot of research and we've come up with three options for you all today. First, to purchase or to lease, I'm sorry, lease to two thousand nineteen auto car garbage trucks, the hail collapse system, the head collection systems, I'm commonly referred to as the body portion of the, of the garbage truck. You can see I've added a pair. The second option is the purchasing of a Mack chassis with a McNeely's garbage collection system. And option is to purchase a two, or I'm sorry again, lease to Peterbilt garbage trucks with the hail garbage collection system. One is, is the most expensive, those that would require a annual lease payment of one hundred and three thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars ninety cents. Option two is the least expensive at, with an annual lease payment of eighty-one thousand, three hundred and five dollars and forty-seven cents. The option is in the middle at ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred or three hundred seventy-three dollars and thirty-six cents. Option one, option two, those vehicles are available, it's available to us now. We could, we could possibly get those vehicles with thirty days. Option three, one vehicle is available to us now. We would have to order the second vehicle that would not be available to us for approximately ten months, I believe. All of these options, the two vehicles and they include a, a, an attachment that is called a Corrado can. These vehicles are a front-load collection garbage truck. We will be moving to a front-load garbage truck because file garbage that we have now, we are one of two municipalities in the state of Arizona that utilize those. We were not able to go to our neighboring cities and for help because they didn't have vehicles that could help us. So I think it's, it's, it's our recommendation that we move to that front-load system. And that way, if we ever run into a problem like this again, we have our neighbors that can help us and we could help our neighbors. We are recommending that we purchase the option or we lease option one. Option one is the, again, the auto car with the hail action. The auto car is a, is a more top-of-the-line vehicle. Come with a system that's called a Halo. Halo, I forget what the name term is, but it's a control, Halo controls. That system will allow for the automatic adjustment when we are picking up garbage. The, the, so that we don't dump on the actual cab, it automatically does that. The option two, the Mack with the McNeely's does not have that. But it, it will, all of these options will serve our needs and we will be able to, to work with them. Again, one additional thing I want to mention with the collection system, the hail system versus the McNeely's system. The Corrado can is actually made for the hail system. The McNeely's system is not made for it, but it does work. What that system, I guess maybe I should talk a little bit, the system is, sorry, the, the Corrado can. The Corrado can is an attachment that looks very similar to a dumpster. But it has the arm that goes out and grabs the rollout, the rollout carts that we are transitioning our residential cans. So these trucks will be for residential and one of these trucks will be used for commercial. However, both of them will have the ability to use that, that, so it will be energyable. Something does happen to one vehicle, the other vehicle can, can, we can attach that attachment and it can continue to on and use the residential, pick up residential carts. I believe I've, I've thrown a lot of information at, and leave, I've touched on everything. Oh, I do see one more, one additional thing here at the end. Currently, we are leading a garbage vehicle from a private company. And so we are spending approximately two, well, we are spending two hundred and fifty dollars paid for. That pretty much totals out to two hundred and fifty dollars per day, paying for one of the, one of the trucks for a month. That would be the price it would cost for us to purchase or lease a new truck. Again, that's a lot of information and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
All right, Anna, I saw your hand first, and Joan.
You know, I'm sorry, Jesus, but you're breaking up like really bad and it was hard hearing most of what you said, so I was wondering if Mr. Pocken could maybe give us a quick rundown and whatever recommendations we think is best. Because I think, you know, the sanitation crew needs good working trucks in order to do their job because they, you know, they have a hard job to do, so we need to make it as, you know, easier for them if we can.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'll, I'll be brief. You have, you have the tally sheet in front of you, I assume. And we're recommending option number one. And in a nutshell, we're recommending that option because it is the most versatile equipment available for the uses that we need for both disposal on the large containers as well as containers that we're using for residential purposes. And we can also adapt to the, some of the existing dumpsters that we have out there in the field without too much modification. So that's really it in a nutshell and the, but I'm, I'm just gonna add two more things to what Jesus has said. The uh, but I'm I'm just gonna add two more things to what Jesus has said. Um, you'll notice that this is a seven-year lease, but the financing is on a lease purchase basis. At the end of the seven years, we can purchase these two vehicles for one dollar each. Okay, so essentially it would be similar to financing a car on a seven-year loan. And uh, the two vehicles that uh we're about to dispose of were both purchased on ten-year lease purchase plans. Uh, I can remember one of them distinctly. And um, and believe it or not, the the first one was before my time. So they're very old vehicles. And uh, beyond their useful life by any measure whatsoever. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention to you is. Because of the uh design of these trucks, um, we will be able to utilize the um. Slider bars that you approved for uh at a previous meeting to uh convert some of our existing dumpsters. To the front load device, uh, make them adaptable to that. In addition to that. Uh, one of our local neighbors has a good number of of containers that they are. Calling surplus and they are willing to sell to us. Uh, they could actually, if if we compare the cost of that to welding, buying and welding on the sleeves. They could actually be cheaper and faster delivered. So we with these trucks, we do have truly more options. Than we had with the ones that only had the side load mechanisms.
Okay, Joan, I saw your hand first.
What is? The the second option I know is not widely used and it's harder to get parts. Is, are you talking a large percentage of parts? Are you talking about parts that are, um, you know. Not likely to break uh frequently or. Excuse me, I have a complaint. This has been going on way too long. Joni and Anna sit there and talk to each other waving their their papers around. And it's very distracting, it's rude, and it's unprofessional.
Do you have a? More type of question, Joan, to Jesus or or city manager?
We're just going to ignore that. Okay. Um, yes, I do. Um, the 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 truck, the the hundred and uh three thousand dollar truck. Uh, you said is is more convenient, it's more accessible. Um, or or the parts are can be used, the parts can still be used on the second option too, correct?
No, so option one, option one, so we talk, when I talk in the report. About the the more widely used, I'm more referring to the collection system. So the hail them. Versus the McNeelius collection system. Um, the hail system is more widely used, so parts are available for the collection system. Is not as widely used. And so the parts for the collection system are are. They're available. I'm not going to say they're not available. They're to go to uh. Some obscure place to to get them. There they are available. And option two will work for us. Just the whole system is a. A better quality collection system. And so I hope that answers.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Leslie, then I'll go to you. Go ahead, Leslie.
Sorry, had to unmute. Um, I should just have a question about the front loading garbage trucks. Are the ones that we already have, I see them sometimes, are they rear loading? And I just am curious as to why that's an advantage, the front loading. Is it just? So that we can use the piece of equipment that we purchased um a little ways back or? And how's that gonna work? Because I'm kind of used to seeing garbage trucks pick up things from the side. Can we talk about that for a minute if it's okay?
Absolutely. So the the trucks that you are seeing are the smaller ones that we, one of them we just purchased. Yes, are rear loading, those pick up the, they can only pick up the residential trash cans and the small one obviously in. In um Old Bisbee was the residential key. The commercial cans right currently are picked up by side loader. We do, if we. Again, the the front loading box will have the ability to pick up garbage dumpsters. And the Corrado can attachment will allow us to up the residential cans from the side. It won't pick up from the sun. They pick them up. So the larger trucks will be able to to pick up rest cane. The burn in San Jose and other areas. Um, it will drive. Down the 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 road, it grabs the can from the right side and it sit in this. Um, the Corrado can attachment. The Corrado can attachment is attached to the front of the front loading dumpster, the garbage truck. Was filled, it then dumps up over the top and dumps it into the collection system.
Okay, I I understand better. Thank you.
Part of it, Leslie, I think is, correct me if I'm wrong, but. That's our problem. We use a side loading hook system now. So all of our dumpsters on the side. And we're only one of two of all the whole state that actually still use those. So we're converting now where everybody else is. We maybe the nineteenth century, I don't know, but twenty first century, maybe. But but I think that's the whole point. We will have to do some conversions to our dumpsters. Um, so that we can pick them up that way now instead of on the side or get some of these extra ones that may be surplus. So. Um, all right, I hope that helps. Uh, Joni, I see your hand.
Well, again, just for clarification, Jesus, each truck can do both dumpster and the rollouts, right? Or does one do one and one do the other?
Right. The the one, well, we'll only, we're only getting one attachment. So one will be assigned. As it in, one will be assigned to commercial. However, if something does happen to one of the vehicles, let's just say one gets a flat. And we take this, we get a vehicle, we we can remove the attachment from one vehicle, move it to the other. They're exactly, they're identical.
Okay, that's, thank you for clarification.
It's kind of like changing a bucket on a on a on a hole. You just. You drive up and there's some hydraulic hoses. I I did a lot of. I went down there and they showed me a little uh video of it and it's pretty cool how this. How this unit sits on the front of those forks, just reaches out, grabs a can, dumps it into its into that next. Looks like its own dumpster. And then when that gets full, they just, they just throw it overhead. So anyway. That's, it seems like the 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 way a lot of this residential is going and uh. Little further going down this option one with the auto car. This is what Phoenix uses. They have ten of them. They've been really happy with them. So that's, um, you know, I was looking for, well. Where else can we look at and see if that's a recommendation? So it is, uh, it is from Phoenix. Uh, Jones, again.
Um, what's the life expectancy for the the vehicles?
Have that offhand. Um, I said, our our current vehicles are two thousand four and a two thousand eight. So uh, they're they're over ten years old. Um, I I would, these being a newer technology, I would assume that they would last. Um, or in that range, if not more.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, when when we bought these, we were expecting them to last ten years. So they far exceeded that, but then we did get ourselves caught in a tough spot by keeping it as long as we have. And I think Lou had his hand up, Mayor.
Yep, next, Lou, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask Jesus, what makes option one, uh, five thousand dollars well spent over option three?
It is that the halo, the the halo uh. Controls that that definitely keeps, it's an automatic control that makes sure that it self-levels the the container. Whether it's the the Corrado can or a dumpster, so it doesn't dump onto the app. Issue, the the auto car and hail system have onboard uh diagnostics capabilities. So if something does happen to them, they tell us exactly what's going on with that. The the Mac with the McNeelius does not have onboard uh diagnostics case of capabilities.
Thank you.
Lou, when I checked it out, looked at him, um. Phoenix actually on their auto cars, when they have a problem. They don't have to drive them to the shop. They'll actually diagnose diagnose them over the internet. Just say what's going on and maybe what needs to happen instead of always having to drive them someplace. So they say that saved them some money. So that's the onboard diagnostics, you know, for five, if it was twenty thousand dollars different, you'd have to think about it, but. You know, as far away as we are from help, sometimes that might be coming handy. That that was my my overall sense of it. Anyway, just thought I'd throw that in there. Um, so more questions, more comments. Seems like this is something uh we need to go and move forward on and 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 but we really have to look at this in my estimation as a as a whole. These are new trucks, but now we've got to convert our system over to dumpsters for commercial that will be picked up in the front and also. Uh, rollouts that can be picked up from the side um. And and less of the of converting to all the for so many dumpsters. So. I I think this, I think they'll probably come back with that recommendation, I would, I would imagine. So, um, one last, Joni, go ahead.
So this is like a, it's like a state thing where you were saying you can buy it for a dollar in the end because I've heard of this before. Can we do other vehicles? Or can I ask that question?
Well.
I mean, in the future, not right now. I mean, is this a a kind of program that we could utilize in the future?
We have, over the years, uh, we've utilized uh the lease purchase program with a buyout for a dollar many times.
Right.
We did it for an ambulance, I remember once, didn't we?
We did, we've done it for police cars. We've done it for all kinds of vehicles.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to verify.
Alrighty.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I just, I don't think we can end this discussion without a a big shout. Out to all of the sanitation workers uh who you have seen out in the neighborhoods. Uh, hand unloading dumpsters over the last couple of days. Um, that's a job that uh most of us would probably never want to do. Unless we absolutely had to, but they were out there willingly uh serving the public because. They knew that sanitation and safety in the community was more important and get a little bit more dirty. So, fine job, guys.
Yeah. Thank you, Matt, uh, Steve. Yeah, that's that's. Well, a well comment. And I think. Sometimes we just have to do what we have to do and that's and that's our employees are willing to do that. So that's, that's a really good thing. Um, so let's uh, not any more hands. I'll take a motion if anybody would like to uh buy a couple of vehicles.
I move to approve the proposal for the lease of two new auto cars with hail yard garbage collection system trucks. Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Frank and a second from Lou. To approve item number nine, which is the lease of purchase agreement for the two new garbage trucks. Well, take a roll call. Thank you, Chris.
Councilmember Pollock.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacomoino.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, everyone. That was a good discussion. I hope the public sees we're gonna get our garbage under control here sooner than later. Um, all right, I'm gonna ask the, like I said before, we'll move on to a. City managers report, if you would, Steve, and before we go into executive. Thanks.
Um, certainly, yes. Um, I have just a few items here uh for tonight and. Uh, first of all, I wanted to report that I heard uh from the uh board of supervisors this afternoon that they did. Uh, approve today our co-location agreement with the JP Court. So uh, all that's left to do is sign those and uh and that will, that will be put to bed. Um, the uh. Oh, gosh, uh, City Hall, um, you heard a nice report from Jason a little bit earlier about reopening the library. Um, we we are giving uh some thought, but we haven't scheduled yet reopening of the City Hall on Erie Street. Um, the uh. As as we see it right now, we need to uh be able to put up some partitions. Uh, in order to uh send the public to the places where they need to go. Without them getting off track and wandering someplace else in the building. Um, we've, as any of you who've been over there have seen, uh, they've been putting up some glass shields. Um, everything's there but the glass um in the public works area so that they can interface with uh the folks there. Um, and we need to put some partitions up um in the space that go straight in and immediately puts you in the finance area. So um, we're we're trying to do that with existing uh materials. Uh, we've got some stuff down in the base that we've still got some stuff over at Toverville. Um, that hopefully we can cobble together with no cost or very little cost. Uh, in in order to get uh, get ourselves uh to the point where we can. Use COVID protocols and make it safe for people to enter the building. So we will keep you up to date as we progress with that and. Uh, we'll hopefully have something more concrete to report, not with concrete, but concrete to report. Um, at the next city council meeting. And then uh. Can't read my own writing here. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna defer uh to Jesus uh for a bi-weekly report on Main Street.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Parkin. So I did have initially, uh, it was an online meeting with WLB Group. And Cochise County to discuss the specifics on the scope of the study. Ensure that scope and the results of that will satisfy Cochise County. Well, we are all on the same page. Uh, I, that meeting occurred uh April twenty. Uh, the following Monday, April twenty sixth, uh, I met in the field with WLB Group. And we through the midst of the study area. Uh, we pointed out a few, a few areas of interest. Um, we are all in the same age as what we are thinking from the the study and what we expect from the results. Um, they do plan on having their servant out next week um to do, to complete their survey. And uh, done with that, we will have a another meeting in the uh timing moving forward.
Are there any questions for Jesus on that? Um, if not, I remembered the one more thing, very important. Um, we're looking for lifeguards. Um, we are planning to open the pool on a limited basis uh with uh. Input from some of the donors who wish to open up under COVID prot- uh, protocol. Uh, but we still need, I think, five lifeguards in order to make it happen. Is that correct, Joel? And so we've been advertising, but if you know anybody uh who uh could fill the role of a lifeguard uh for the summer. Uh, please, please send them to Joel and uh we'll get them set up. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alrighty. Sounds good. Thank you. Keep us updated on the Main Street and uh we'll uh. Wait for the next one in a couple of weeks or not sooner. All right, um, so moving on now, I'd like to move on to item ten, which is possible approval to go into a motion. Or go ahead to prove a motion to go into executive session. Could I have a motion to go into executive session?
I move that we go into executive session.
Second.
I have a motion by Frank and a second by Leslie to move into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 O's, nay. Charity terms, ayes have it. So moved. We'll uh exit now and move on to the other. Login for executive session. Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to come out of executive session?
I move we come out of executive session.
There's a. It was moved by Joan and seconded by Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We are back in regular session.
Motion passes. We are back in regular session. On to number eleven. Mr. Estes, are you going to take this or do we just need a motion?
We just need a, a motion to, for direction to counsel on, on the matter.
I would like to make a motion that we direct Christian, a city lawyer, to proceed the appeal.
I second.
Frank, second by Joan. Ashley, can we take a roll call, please?
Council member Pollock.
Hi.
Council member Giacamino. Council member Davis.
Hi.
Council member Johns.
Hi.
Council member Hanson.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously. We've already done the city manager's report. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Leslie to adjourn. All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passes. We are adjourned.
Hey. Good night, everybody.